Hello Carol, can you hear me?
Now I can hear you.
All right.
I couldn't hear you before, how are you?
I'm doing well. Uh, my name is James. It won't let me, uh, change it, so.
Change it to Danny?
If you can, I can't, not on my end.
Maybe Ken can take care of that.
Okay, well I'm gonna mute now.
I just want to report out that direction has just been given to staff. So at this time, we're gonna call the meeting order and we're gonna do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, roll call please.
Yes, Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Councilmember Clark Kreutz?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
There.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Here.
Mayor Nysley?
Here.
And now I need an adoption of the agenda.
A second.
Did you hear that Carol?
What was that?
Adoption of the agenda. It was Brian and then, uh, Councilmember Baker and then Councilmember Clark Kreutz.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we're gonna move on to recommendations.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, we need to vote, I was gonna get the question.
She got ahead.
All right, roll call please.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Kreutz?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
All right, now we're going to move to one of my favorite parts of the night. So first of all, I'd like to call up committee members, present and past of the Eggplant Festival to come up here, please. Maybe we'll have them stand over here and I'll stand. So I'm... So we have a mixture of our, um, past and present committee members and I'm very excited to give this proclamation tonight, uh, to the Eggplant Festival for its 35th anniversary. So whereas on October 1st, 2022, the Eggplant Festival will celebrate 35-year anniversary. Whereas the Eggplant Festival is the longest-running community festival in the town of Loomis. Whereas the Eggplant Festival is ongoing source of community spirit, friendly fun, economic growth, and whereas the Loomis Eggplant Festival is a free annual event organized by volunteers and the Loomis Chamber of Commerce. Whereas the Loomis Eggplant Festival showcases the town of Loomis's businesses, organizations, local schools, and rural living characteristics. Now therefore, I hereby proclaim that the Town Council of the Town of Loomis desires to recognize the 35-year anniversary of the Loomis Eggplant Festival. I'm gonna give this to you guys.
The Eggplant Festival's been around longer than Ashley.
Henry Snyder's been on from the very beginning, 35 years. And now, I would like to call up South Placer Fire. You guys all made it, thank you. So I found out that September is National Firefighters Month, Appreciation Month, and we're so appreciative and I would like to give this proclamation to you. Whereas South Placer Protection District is dedicated to saving lives and enriching the communities we serve and whereas South Placer Protection District recognizes the benefits derived from the hard work, sacrifice, unwavering dedication and the fire service members have contributed throughout the country, throughout the town of Loomis. And whereas the role of the firefighter today is one of dedication, commitment, sacrifice, and willingness to put your lives on the line. And whereas firefighters continue to play an intricate role in protecting the health and well-being of our people have provided critical and timely comfort and supported those affected. Now therefore, the Town of Loomis Council and the Town of Loomis do hereby proclaim the month of September as Firefighter Appreciation Month and urge all citizens to recognize the firefighters who give their lives for those who they serve. And we have one more special certificate of appreciation to Smoking Bliss and all of the family members if they want to come up here. Everybody that has a... This is, um, I'm gonna go ahead and read this. Brian Perez, Darren Perez, Sarah Perez, Carol Combs, Shelley Perez, Eva Clark, Maya Clark, Larry Perez, Casey Bliss, and Dean Bliss. This appreciation is for their unselfish service to the Town of Loomis at the Community National Night Out event on August 2nd, 2022. It wouldn't have been accomplished, it would've been impossible to host this event without your hope and your can-do attitude. We want to give you a sincere thank you. They really stepped up and they came out here and they barbecued for over 100 people and they just, and they served and they did it with friendly smiles, so.
Do you have any ribs for us tonight?
That is a very good question.
We're cooking all day tomorrow for the victims that have been evacuated. I'm helping somebody else, so I won't know till tomorrow morning when I get there.
My pleasure. If you do, let Rib know, please, from HR Ware and...
I will. Okay, great.
On the 17th.
I just really want to say that these people make our town. This makes Loomis a great place to be and I just really thank everybody that gives their time and volunteers. It's really, really amazing. Do you guys have anything you want to say? Want some ribs? So now we're gonna go to matters of interest to council members.
I just want to, more of an interest in knowing, when will our Park Sunrise Loomis that project get started, replacing the old equipment improvement?
The mic, there we go. Little bit of a staffing issue in engineering with everything we're trying to get done. One of the items that's actually on tonight was to bring onboard some project management help. It's one of the CIP projects and so the plan was to start in and assign them that project right away. We have to spend the money by the end of next year or we lose it. But we're gonna go through a community involvement process and then, um, that should start by the end of the year and then we'll jump in with design and construction maybe next summer.
So, we will be able to get it done before?
Absolutely, yeah, no that's, that one's on my top list of not running. That and all the storm drain improvement work that we funded through the storm program.
Yeah, I just don't want to lose any grant money.
No, I don't either.
Yeah, thank you.
Town Manager Report, Sean.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, a couple things, the mosquito fire, it's too bad that, oh, yes, she's still here. So I'm gonna, I was gonna give just a real quick update of like the stuff that I know, but if you could provide any color commentary, that'd be appreciated, yeah, since you know more than I do for sure. So the mosquito fire burning near Forest Hill started on September 6th. It's, that fire obviously exploded, it burned more than 50,000 acres as of this morning. 18% containment as of this morning with nearly 2,700 personnel working on the fire. However, it jumped and is heading back towards Forest Hill and so that 50,000 is obviously bigger and maybe Mark could provide, the chief could provide us a little bit of update on that. Best place for information on the fire and really any emergency in Placer County is the county's Emergency Operations Services website, so I have a link to that in the manager's report. On that website, if you put your mouse over the disaster information button at the top and click that, it'll take you to current incidents and it's got a whole bunch of information on the mosquito fire underneath that, including all of the new and current evacuation status, the how many personnel, the size and containment, all that stuff. And then Placer County is asking anyone who wants to help with that fire to go through the Placer Community Foundation. They have a specific mosquito fire fund that's been set up. That website's placercf.org/relieve. And then I'll ask the chief to just come up and give the most recent update because I wrote this at, I think, 10 o'clock this morning and it's obviously out of date already.
Thank you, Mark, you're South Placer Fire District. We have some crews up there right now. Today's been a very dynamic day. The fire jumped and spotted, meaning Brands and Embers got ahead of the fire and it's really taken off. As you noted, it's started on the ridge towards Wharton's Market? Wharton's Market, did I get that right? And it's now also threatening the high school and the subdivision. I don't have an actual count on acres, but it has changed dramatically. If you've been outside and noticed the fleet of aircraft that have been flying continuously overhead over the last few hours, it is picking up. In addition to that, there was a new fire that started on in Dutch Flat that closed Highway 80 for a period of time, I'm not sure if it's still closed, but they did. Okay, so there are a lot of active fire right now going on in the community, trying to keep up with a lot. So, thank you Roger, appreciate it. That's the only update I have.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.
I have a quick question though, about evacuations and the Placer County site, does it show the evacuations?
It has all of that, most updated stuff. Their Facebook page is also being updated, like, as things are happening. So either that website that I talked about or their Facebook page has the most up-to-date information that you can get on evacuations.
Okay, thanks.
Next up, Leadership Loomis, so Cohort Four was supposed to be held this year, starting in August, but, so Loomis Basin Chamber of Commerce has operated that program for the past three years, town assisted with logistics and then I served on the program steering committee. And I think most of you know that that program's intended to inspire and educate future leaders to get involved with our community. Unfortunately, the chamber hasn't been able to operate that program this year. So because the program has been so successful in the past and because it's such an important program for the town and for the chamber to run, the town's gonna take that on this year, the town staff itself is gonna take that on this year for an abbreviated program. We're gonna do a six-month program. There won't be any additional impact on staff because I was already involved with it previously. It won't be any new impact on me or on anybody else on staff. And there won't be a financial impact on the town because there's a participation fee that's meant to offset the program costs that are collected for each participant. So we're looking to start that abbreviated program in January, it's gonna run through June, and then I'll provide more details when the steering committee is able to kind of get together and pull some stuff together and get the program finalized. The next one I wanted to talk about and this, I think this will be it. The parking, so parking along Taylor Road, we've had three accidents along, on Taylor Road in the past maybe six months where people are pulling out of driveways on Taylor Road from Horseshoe Bar going up to probably King, so leaving like the parking lot where Brew Coffee is and where the Bridge Yoga is. Pulling out of the parking lot and because of the way that cars park all the way to the edge of the driveway, they get T-boned when they're pulling out because you can't see. And so with the most recent one, Merrill and I got together, went out there and walked in 115-degree weather and decided that it would be a good thing for us to paint a red curb on the downstream side of the curb right there by the driveway. So one, basically one parking space to give additional sight distance for folks pulling out so you can see. So we're gonna do that within the next hopefully couple of weeks, get those painted, there's how many, do you know how many there are? There's only... Okay, right, so, and it's only the side that's on the downside of those driveways, but make sure that we don't have another accident where somebody gets seriously injured, we want to do that and get that done. And then lastly, the Slurry Seal Project bids came in today, so I had a number 10 in your consent agenda is the authorization to award a contract of up to 500,000 for the Slurry Seal Project. Bid opening came in this morning and I'll let Merrill just give you a quick update on the bids. It doesn't impact, the bid amount doesn't impact council's action on the consent agenda because it did come under the 500,000 and the action we're requesting is to award a contract of up to 500,000, but I'll turn it over to Merrill really quickly.
Sure, yeah, this one, we wanted to give the bidders the maximum amount of time to submit their bids and see the opportunity and so, little unusual, but that's why the staff report was asking for city, town manager approval if it's within budget, and it was. So the low bid was 384,000, the budget was 500, so we're well within the budget. And I've already talked to them and they're actually gearing up to start middle of next week, so get it done this year.
Is this the same type of material that was used like out on?
Out on Laird, it's the top surface of what was put down on Laird, Laird was actually a Cape Seal, which is a chip seal, which was followed by a slurry seal. This project is just that top layer, it's the sand and oil mixed together as a slurry seal.
Next up is the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center, library and report, do you have something, do you want to put it all under the?
No, I didn't.
Okay, all right, come on.
Good evening, everyone, so I'm just gonna try and make this quick, just our upcoming events. This Saturday, September 17th, the Master Gardeners are going to have an in-person workshop at the library all about lawn replacement. And then also this Saturday, we have our monthly origami club. We, on Tuesday, September 20th, we're going to have our Mad About Manga Club for teens and tweens. And then September 21st, Girls Who Code is starting back up, that's for girls in 3rd through 6th grade. On September 22nd, we're going to have our Hoopla/Libby Digital Library Information Hour where we go over what our two digital library services are and how to use them. It's really great, especially for seniors, we go over everything from, you know, how to download the app onto your phone or your device to actually using it. And then September 24th, the Master Gardeners will be back again for a workshop on irrigation. And also on September 24th, we are going to have our Read to a Dog program. And also on September 24th, our Ukulele Strum Along, which has been really fun and going really great. And then of course, we have preschool Storytime every Friday. With the weather and the smoke, we will be doing it indoors if it's too hot or too smokey. If the weather's nice, we are going to continue doing it outside. And then finally, the library will be closed on October 1st for the Eggplant Festival and we will have a booth there, so you can come and see us there. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
And the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update.
Evening, everybody. How you doing, Madam Mayor? Good to see you. So yes, the Chamber of Commerce is 35th Annual Eggplant Festival. I brought a bunch of postcards, everybody, they're on the table on the way out, so if you please grab one. Of course, it shows off what we have, the times, and then all of our wonderful sponsors. In addition to the Eggplant Festival, we have on the 22nd of this month, a joint ribbon cutting for Carte Jewelers, Roy, who is a very longtime supporter of all things Loomis, especially the Loomis Chamber. He passed a couple months ago and so we're gonna do an open house at his business, Carte Jewelers, to sort of honor him and also welcome the new owner. That's on Thursday, September 22nd at 5:30. And then also on Tuesday, October 4th, the League of Women Voters reached out to the chamber to ask for help hosting a candidate night, so they want to have a candidate discussion night here at the Train Depot, so we're gonna be helped promoting that event on their behalf. And our, lastly, our October 19th is the Placer Valley 22. Placer Valley 22 is a joint event with all five chambers. We do have Colfax involved as well, but things, hopefully with the fire, things are, she can stay involved. And we do have Placer Valley Tourism, the cities are all involved, our city manager's gonna be there on a panel. It's, think of a big business symposium, so it's a giant business expo and our keynote speaker beside Sean is gonna be Damon John from Shark Tank. So it's gonna be a lot of fun, August, or October 19th, excuse me. So, if any questions, comments, concerns, all right?
Thank you, Frank.
Really, who would you rather talk to? Me or the guy from Shark Tank, right? Appreciate it. We both have bald heads.
Okay. This is the time now to have public comment for items not on the agenda.
David Raiden, 3486 Delmar. Last month, I brought up updating the tree ordinance to close some loopholes and I was wondering if you had an update on that, if that was gonna take place? And also, if you needed to, or not necessarily needed to, but if you wanted, I was willing to help out with, you know, any wording, not that that's my area of expertise, but you know, we've all had experience on the general plan update committees, so. Any update on that would be great, thank you.
At this time, council hasn't given any direction to move forward with modifications to the ordinance. If it, if we were to do that, it would go through the planning commission first and then make its way to council, but unless I get a direction to do that, we may talk about that the next strategic planning session, if...
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Jesse Lunsford, 6133 Smokewood Court. Mr. Duncan is on fault for bringing up parks. At the planning commission meeting, there was, when the Grove went through, it was pointed out that was a private park. We had one private park and we had two I-don't-knows. Can we find out if that is a private park? And if it's so, what are the limitations and does Loomis allow private parks? Thank you much.
I don't know the answer to that, but I will find out and bring it back to council at the next meeting.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Pam, go ahead, you just need to unmute yourself.
Hello, Pam Blake, I just want to make a comment, we have a town council election in November and it is a nonpartisan office, so candidates should not be receiving or accepting PAC money like the 2020 election that we had. Just wanted to throw that out there, nonpartisan office for anybody who's running for town council in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on Zoom? All right, so, yeah, it's time to, opportunity to comment on the consent calendar. Anybody in the audience want to comment on the consent calendar? Anybody on Zoom? All right, so then we'll vote.
Madam Mayor, I'll move consent.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call please.
Yes, Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark Kreutz?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
Council, if I could ask, just to make things maybe a little bit easier for Carol, when the second, when the motion and the second are made, can you say your name at the same time? So, motion by Baker, second by Cartwright or whatever, just so it make it a little bit easier for her to track it.
Thank you, Sean.
All right, now we're gonna move on to item number 13. And Sean, do you want to go ahead and?
This is actually our esteemed Finance Director's item, so I'll turn it over to him.
All right.
Okay, so I'll try not to speak accountantese, I'll do my best, speak like a normal human being. The two, the two items that I'm about to go over are both based on the same underlying principle that a person who's proposing a project that isn't for the general benefit of the town should bear the costs themselves. And so the first item that we have here is updating our building inspection fees. We have never updated our building inspection fees. As a matter of fact, and this is, this is apocryphal, but I've been told by our building inspector that our fees are the second lowest in all the state, only lower than Siskiyou County. People come in for a building permit and they go, "Really? You know, that's, that's all you're charging?" And so I, not to just make a money grab, but we want to make sure that our costs are actually covered. And it's, it's clear that they aren't. I've suggested what we're going to need to do is a full-scale cost of service study and that's done by analyzing each activity and then determining the number of hours and who's involved, multiplying that by the cost and coming up with a cost reimbursement. In an effort to stop the bleeding, we were proposing some increases. And when I say bleeding, it's our minimum building permit fee is $30. If somebody doesn't have, we charge 1% of the cost and if they don't have, like, you can do a roofing permit for $30. That requires three inspections by our building inspector, who charges us $115 an hour. We're losing, the general fund is losing money, the general populace is paying these costs. And so we just need to, we need to stop that, we need to get closer to what's reality and and then... that other cities charge differently than we do, or at all, that we didn't do at all. Plan review fees. We charge, one, our building is, our building permit is 1% of the assessed value of a project. And included in that 1%, is, 25% of that is the plan review. Every other city, that, that, that fee is charged separately. And it's up 65 to 75% of the total project. So simply by doing that alone, we'll recover a greater portion of our costs. Reinspection fees. There's, there's no incentive for a builder to be prepared for an inspection. We'll often get, often get an inspection request. He'll go out and they're not ready. We have no, no teeth for saying, "Well, gosh, you know, you wasted my time. I'm gonna charge you more." This reinspection fee of $150, after, we give them a free pass, you know, if they don't, if they aren't ready one time, we'll say, "Okay." But if they do it again, it's gonna be $150 to come back out again. So $150 reinspection fee. Working without a permit, there's a lot of, I might say there's a lot of this going on, but occasionally, we'll see somebody who adds on to their house or does a lot of work without, without even permits. Then they'll decide, "Oh, I need to sell this house. I can't sell it without permits." And your building inspector can't, can hardly inspect it, let alone evaluate it. We're recommending, and this is typical of other cities, 100% increase in the fees, Processing fee. Most other cities charge a handling fee. Our, our front office people spend at least 30 minutes on every application that comes across the counter, dealing with the, them, making copies, separating copies, mailing things. We want to recover that cost, and we're gonna, recommending a $30 processing fee. Revisions to existing applications. Somebody will go through a building permit process, it'll be approved, all ready to go, and they decide they wanna put the walls in a different place, or move the electoral here. Currently, we don't have any ability to charge them additional fees for that, so we're recommending a, additional fees. 10% of the original plan check fee. Finally, the minimum permit. We're recommending $150. As I said, our, our inspection, our inspectors costing us $100, $115 an hour at overhead, $150 seemed like a reasonable cost. I compared this, I wanted to make sure that we weren't being outrageous, so I took our neighbors, Auburn on one side and, and the city that shall not be named on the other, the Rockland on the other, and compared, and we do tend to fall somewhere in the middle of those two. So I, we feel like, and then I checked with the attorney, and we feel that these are justifiable, but definitely we need to do a cost of service study. We have not budgeted for that in this current fiscal year. It could cost $25,000 to $50,000 to do a full-blown study. We can look at, at mid-year and see how we're doing for revenues versus expenses, or if, and if nothing else, plan for next, next fiscal year. So, questions?
Danny, do you have any questions? No. All right, then we'll open it up for public comment.
Dave Dally, 315 Delmar Avenue. So you wanna charge people more for building permits, and you're not giving them no more service, and you're not giving them, you're, you, you don't have the facilities or the manpower to even charge people more, and you can't compare us to Rockland. And if you wanna compare us to Siskiyou County, you know how big Siskiyou County is? And I think you're overpaying the building inspector because she's not worth $150 an hour, and there's more ways to get extra money from builders, and you're talking about builders that don't pull permits? Your buddy Michael Fornay on Delmar Avenue just remodeled two houses four months on each house with no building permit, and the town knew about it. Everybody called on him, and nothing was done. So here we go again, rules for thee, but not for me. There's different ways to get money. I've been a contractor for 30 years. If you can't make money off building, off of a building permit, then you guys are doing something wrong. It isn't that you're not charging enough. It's management. You don't have the right management in order to run a good department, for building department. And you wanna build Loomis so much, and you don't have the resources to build it, or to expand Loomis the way you guys want to expand it.
All right, do we have anybody else in the, out here in the public that wants to make public comment? What about on Zoom?
Yep, we got it. Miguel, go ahead.
Thank you. I was, I would like to recommend that some form be put on the building, so that the homeowner knows that the building inspector came out. I've had an air conditioner heater put in, I've had a roof put in, I've had a solar unit put in on my roof, and the only time I knew the building inspector came out was for the solar unit. There's no tag or anything that says that the building inspectors come out and reviewed the project to see that it complies with whatever's necessary.
All right. Thank you, Miguel. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
We have Jean Wilson. Go ahead, Jean.
Okay, I had just a couple questions that maybe Roger can help explain, and I'm not disputing that we need to raise things, but is the $150 minimum permit, and I'll ask the questions, you can answer after, is the $150 minimum, is that in addition to the other ones, or is that, if you have something that's not very much, that's the, that's the minimum amount that you'd pay, even if it's a small item? And I was wondering, how is it determined, if it's 1% of the assessed value, how do you determine that? And I'm thinking some things, might, might, there might be a big, big difference. For instance, if, if you put on a 20-year roof, it costs you a whole lot less than if you're putting on a 40-year roof. But the inspections, as far as the, the cost to the town, is probably about the same. And I've, and, you know, there are things like the whole house, or putting in a new water heater, or things like that. You know, how do you decide what is, what is, how, how much is, how do you figure out what's the assessed value that you're gonna change, charge the 1% on? And if somebody puts in their own water heater, for instance, and gets inspected, that's different than if they pay the, the company to come out and do it. So just a thumbnail answer on how you decide on, on those, those two questions. One is, is the $150 in addition, or is your, if you're getting just some small thing done, that's the minimum period? And the other one is, how do you figure out assessed value? Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, the, the $150 is the minimum fee. If there, if it's a $10,000 project, that would, at 1%, that would only be $100. So $150 would be the, the fee. There's no, you know, no other, no other building permit fees. There'd still be the application fee, because there's still the time required for that. As far as calculating the value, there's two ways we do it. On construction and remodeling, it's based on the square footage and the type of construction. There's a, the Building BIA, there's some, there's calculations that are generally accepted by municipalities around the country that, that we use to calculate the value of, based on the square footage being constructed. The other way is by contract amount. If, all the solar projects, all the, all room remodels, we'll actually, now, we require builders to bring in their contract amount, so we know what they're charging. Now, this is all kind of secondhand, because I don't deal with that. I'm just, I'm sitting there, recording the information once it comes through. So that's my understanding of how those are calculated.
You know, Roger, what you've just said is actually really correct. For solar projects, remodels, interior TIs, it's based on a contract valuation that is given to us by the contractor itself. We do ask for contract, for written contracts when they come in, especially with solar companies. It is, it is a industry-wide practice. That way, we can capture what is actually being done. As far as anything that involves additional square footage, we do have a, evaluation is based on each square footage, and as Roger stated, there is a building standard fee that is, an international one that's recognized. It is updated annually, and so we update ours annually, so we can come up with evaluation. And from that is where we get the 1% of a cost on, say, water heaters and re-roofs and decks and that kind of stuff. It's based on that, that 1%. And like I said, right now, an average one is costing $30 for the, for the applicant, but just for building inspection time and the time that it takes for staff, the actual cost is, is, is being borne by the rest of the residents, because it doesn't cover the cost.
I agree.
Okay. Is there anybody else on Zoom? All right. Would we be able to find out how they notify the resident that they've been to the, to the, to the resident to do that inspection? Can we just report that?
Every building inspection has a sign-off sheet.
Okay.
So, yeah, and when it's, when it's done, they, they take it, but, uh...
Okay.
So, yeah, I, yeah. I'm, I don't know what happened with his project, but notice is given.
Okay. So I just need a motion?
I, I just have some comments. You know, I, this is kind of a, I guess, probably a longstanding conversation between the building industry and the public on what the fees should actually be and how it works, and, or the building industry and government, that is. I would like to see, I really, and obviously, this is gonna have to be for a mid-year for the council to do, but I would really like to see that study done. The, the cost shouldn't be borne by the general public, but at the same time, like, I get phone calls almost weekly with people complaining, and I, I take a lot of it with a grain of salt, that, you know, they're complaining that inspections take too long, or they complain about the inspector, or that the process to just get their plans through takes too long. And so I, I would like to kind of see the, I would like to see things improve on the quickliness, or how quickly we, we process these. And just an improvement in the overall system. If we're gonna charge more, I think that the level of service should be higher for both the, the public person coming in to get just a permit for something that, a bathroom remodel they're gonna do themselves, or a contractor. So I think the, the interface between government and the general public and the building industry needs to be better overall, and so I would like to see that, as we look at raising fees, that, that we also, as government, raise our level of service.
I think this is long overdue, though. I mean, if you just looked at the cost of living and the private, the companies who contract with, they're raising their prices, and like I said, I don't wanna, you know, fund other people's projects or their home improvement off of, I don't want my, you know, residents of Loomis to do so. I think it should be us. I mean, whoever's getting the work done. And I've, I've had relatively good experiences with the permitting process when I've had it done. So I, I think it's long overdue that we do something here, and if this is like putting us in the general area of where we live, in Placer County, and we're not going to subsidize other people's projects, I think it's a good time to do that.
If I could, you know, I, with what you just said, Jeff, it kind of struck a little bit of a chord with me. I don't wanna do what other people do just because other people do it. I wanna do what's justified according to our expenses and what these things actually cost, so I, I really don't care what Rockland charges, but like, we need to do, we need to check our overall costs and then come up with a way for us to improve our system and our interface, so.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I didn't mean it to come off as being...
No, no, no. I just, but, but...
But what I'm saying, there is a cost of doing business, and we've kind of failed in that for not having any increase in 35 years.
No, I agree with you. I just wanna make sure that we're not just, hey, our neighbor here is...
No, no. I wouldn't, I wouldn't dream of doing what Rockland does.
Ugh.
So I'll agree with both of my esteemed council members, but I think that Roger's done his homework in the, in the beginning of this, and appreciate that, and obviously there's a problem. And, you know, in order to kind of gauge what that problem is, sometimes you have to go and look at our neighboring people just to figure out if there's a problem indeed. So I'm, I think it's important that we look at these fees. I think it's important that we get the study, for sure, and I'm looking forward to hopefully adding that to the mid-year budget, as you suggested.
Danny, do you have anything?
You're muted.
Yeah, I can't tell...
Sorry, I had some technical difficulties. No, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. And I also would like to revisit the study at the mid, mid-budget review, so.
Public comment? Public, we did...
We already did public comment. That was just a motion.
And there's a motion. Clark Kretz makes a motion. Can't even say my own name. Jan makes the motion.
Duncan, seconds.
All right, roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Aye.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Mayor Nysley?
Yes.
All right. We'll move on to number 14.
14. Sound, sound quite a bit the same. On the, on the other hand, on this one, we did do a study. So planning, on the planning fees. Now, these are, these are not people just building a, building a home or doing addition. This is planning projects, where somebody wants to do a subdivision, or line, lot-line changes or variances. These are the, the planning projects. We did a, a study in 2009, where Tom Sinclair and associates did a study where they looked at the, the factors that go into creating the cost for our planning fees. And he went through each project, calculated the number of hours by which person, the costs that they were spending on it, and then calculating out the fees. Since then, we haven't changed those fees at all. And so when you, the accountant in me says, if the hours to do something hasn't changed, but the hourly rate for the person doing it does, then clearly, we're falling behind. And so I just took, for, to get things started, again, I'm recommending a, a study, but to get things started, I took the, all the, the cost of living adjustments that the, that the employees have received since 2009, since that's the other half the factor, and added that to create the, to create a new temporary fee. And it's not, if, people are gonna say, "Oh, that's impossible. It could be 56%." Believe me, over the multi, the, the compounding factors from 2009 to today, the, the payroll has increased by 56%. And so I took each of the, each of the activities. Some of them had fixed fees, some of them were hourly rates, and I created a supplemental schedule that we'll use until the time that we can get a study done. And again, these are, these are for developers who come into town, and I'm not gonna name any names, because we've had some developers in town doing projects that the, that the citizens are subsidizing, because we're not collecting enough money to pay these. So I, I think this, the building, I think the building inspection fees are important. I think these are more important, because this is really the, the development... I think these are more important because this is really the, the development coming into town, people making money off of us, off of our citizens on the outside to get their projects through the, through the system. I don't, I don't know if I, again, so much of it overlaps from the previous item. I don't, I'm not going to go through each line. I'm just going to say I applied that 56% cost COLA adjustment to each of the lines to come up with a new rate. I started out, I was going to go through and talk to each person and find out how much they spent on this, but decided that, you know what, we're going to have to hire a contractor to do it. I would, it'd be a fun thing for an accountant to take on, but I have too much to do already. I thought I could do it in 40 hours. After about 20 hours of just setting up the schedules and things, then now, we need to pay somebody else. So my recommendation, again, is to do a contract for a study, but to do this interim step. And then again, I compared my estimates to our neighboring cities because we're paying, everyone's paying each other about the same. So it seemed fair to compare, and we're, again, we fall, we're kind of in the middle between Auburn and Rockland.
All right. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I do.
All right.
And what would the estimated cost for this study be?
Again, you're looking at $25,000 to $50,000 probably. We had one estimate from a company to do the study, but then it also included impact fees. So we'll probably do the impact fees at the same time to split it out.
I think what we really need to do is just do a holistic fee study, looking at everything that we have.
When I was looking up things, most cities have a master fee schedule with everything on it. So, you know, we should probably, I went, one study probably for $50,000 to $60,000, $70,000 to probably cover it all.
Okay. That was my, was going to be my question. I think it should be, we should just do one study and get everything covered. All right, I will open up to public comment.
Jesse Lunsford, 6133, Smokewood Quirt. Since we got into this hole from 13 years ago, how are we going to stop it from happening 13 years from now? There's, not that I'm complaining, because I like my municipal fees. They go up on a regular basis. Is there any way to put a cost of living into this so that we don't dig this hole again 13 years from now? Thank you much.
That's exactly what I was going to suggest anyway, was that when they, when we adopt the new fees, we add that an annual COLA be applied to them.
All right, anybody else here in the audience? How about on Zoom?
Nope.
All right. And this, the mid-adjustment is in, is that in January or February?
Yes, I do it, I take the December 31 numbers and calculate it. And usually in December, I mean, usually in January or in the February meeting, we talk about it. I'll make sure, I'll try to get ready for January this year because, and right now, you know, sales taxes are looking good right now, going well, so, but then that can always switch over pretty quick. But I, right now, I'm thinking we'll probably be able to find them. I need to do it.
All right. So I would, just a question on the motion, then. Would the motion be to do a fee study for all of them?
The motion would be, the motion would be to adopt the resolution approving, adopting this new fee schedule, and then direction has already been given to staff to do this fee, to bring it back in January for a budget amendment to do the big fee study.
Okay.
But that's not part, that would be part of your, it's not on the agenda now, it's not, it wouldn't be part of the actual motion.
Okay.
For this. But we get the message loud and clear.
Clark Kretz moves to approval.
Duncan seconds.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Clark Kretz.
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan.
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
And Mayor Nicely.
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we get to move on to business. Item 15. Thank you guys for hanging on with us.
Did you know about item number 11? We just jumped all the way through, all the way down. I mean, I think.
That was on the consent calendar.
Yeah. 11 and 12 are on the consent calendar.
I'm sorry?
It was on the consent calendar that we approved. So it went 11, 12, on to the next page, and then?
Then public hearing started on 13.
So items 1 through 12 were on the consent agenda.
Yeah, item number. I didn't realize that. Dave Dally again. Item number 11 is a blank check for various projects and programs. Don't you think that people of Loomis should know what projects and programs we're paying with before we write a blank check?
It's not a blank check.
I.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Loomis authorizing the execution of professional services contract for various projects and programs.
I'd suggest that you look at the actual agenda item and look at the staff report, Dave, that has all the information in there. I'll meet, we'll want more to the mill and meet and discuss it with, if you have a question about it, though. Or actually, I'll give you my staff report.
All right. So this is a Placer County Local Agency Information Commission, LAFCO, presentation. Come on. Hi, Michelle.
Hello, Mayor Nicely and members of the council. My name is Michelle McIntyre. I'm the executive officer for Placer LAFCO. I've been with Placer LAFCO for about a year. Prior to Placer LAFCO, I was with Solano County and Solano LAFCO. Total about 22, 23 years. I have a master's degree in public administration, and I'm loving Placer County. So I'm just going to turn it over to Sean, and also, I just want to thank you for inviting me to come and speak to your council tonight. Just a couple of things. I did provide the presentation, just in case, and also a couple of handouts that are related to the presentation, which I'll go over. Ready? Okay, next slide. So in the last year, I've been asked several questions, questions as I've been going around Placer County, and these are some of the top questions. One, what is LAFCO? And I will go over the answers to these questions throughout my presentation. Is LAFCO a county department? I get that almost weekly. What are LAFCO's, or what is LAFCO's purpose? What are our jurisdictions, our powers? What are our planning and regulatory functions? And then, what is the typical city annexation process? So I'll go over the service review or special study requirements, the sphere of influence update, and finally, the annexation. And we'll have some time for questions, if you have any, but feel free to stop me at any time. I have about 20 slides, and, you know, I'll try and go through them quickly, but if you need me to slow down or stop, I'm happy to do so. Okay, so the first slide is, what is, or third slide, what is LAFCO? Well, LAFCO stands for the Local Agency Formation Commission. It's an independent agency with planning and regulatory responsibilities. I highlighted that because we'll go over it a little bit later. But LAFCO administers a section of the state law known as the Cortez-Ze Nox-Hertzberg Act or the CKH Act. And you'll know a little bit more once I go through. That's a big picture. It's, you know, so first of all, is LAFCO a county department? No, we're not. Many, many years ago, LAFCO was part of the county, but in 2000, the law was rewritten so that we became completely independent. Prior to that, there was a relationship with the county that most LAFCOs were treated like a county department. And then that completely separated in 2000 with the Cortez-Ze Nox-Hertzberg Act. And so we were actually created in 1963 to coordinate logical and orderly growth and development. So Placer LAFCO is comprised of two county supervisors, and then the names are in parentheses there, but it's Supervisor Gustafson and Supervisor Weigant. We do have two city council members, Mayor Burrows from Colfax and Tracy Mendoza from Roseville. He's a council member. We do have two special districts that are currently seated, Josh Alpine from PCWA and Rick Stevens with the Turkey Airport District. And then we have one public member, Susan Rohan, which many of you may know from, she was on the Roseville City Council and also the Roseville Mayor. And then we have an alternate in each category, including Mayor Nicely for the cities. We do have a vacancy, and we're currently running an election for the special district seat. Next slide. So what is our purpose? Well, it's to promote logical and orderly growth and development of cities and special districts. It's to discourage urban sprawl, preserve ag and open space lands, and promote efficient government services. So this is what we've been tasked to do. It is a huge task, if you consider how much, you know, is involved with that. And then what are our jurisdictions? So it includes all cities and towns like the Loomis and most special districts. I just want to quickly go over some of the special districts that, or districts that are not included with LAFCO. For example, the Air Pollution and Quality Control District. We do not have jurisdiction over them, but we do, Placer LAFCO anywhere, shares a building. We lease an office space from them. We don't have jurisdictions over county boundaries. I recently received a phone call for that a few weeks ago. We don't have jurisdictions over community facilities districts. That's for the cities to form. And then improvement districts and joint powers authorities, which they do have to file records with us, but we do not have purview over them. And then just some of LAFCO's powers. I didn't want to list so many, but these are the ones that we deal with. City incorporations, like the Town of Loomis, I think is the most recent incorporation here in Placer County. But district formations, annexations for cities, special districts, you know, detachments, cities and special districts. I just wanted to explain a couple of items here. Reorganizations means two or more concurrent actions. So that could be an annexation to a city with a detachment to a fire district, for example. That's a reorganization. Or we have a current project where we're annexing one fire district, Meeks Bay, into North Tahoe Fire District. That's also a reorganization. But these are the typical LAFCO day-to-day activities, not so much city incorporations, but we do run into that. Next slide, please. So I mentioned earlier that we have planning and regulatory responsibilities. So on the planning side, we establish, review, and update spheres of Influences, which I'll go over a little bit more later, for all cities and special districts. We prepare municipal service reviews and special studies also for our cities and special districts. The special studies, it's, I'll go over it in a little bit, but, well, I'll go over it in a little bit. Next slide, please. LAFCO's regulatory function, we modify existing agencies and create new ones. We consider boundary changes, like, you know, the city annexations and district annexations. We have authority over the extension of public services. What I mostly see, especially here, is sewer and, not so much water, but that will be coming, I'm sure. It's to extend services into a city sphere or a district sphere prior to annexation. And I'll go over when, the two cases, when that can occur. But it's very important then, and I want to note, that LAFCO is prohibited from regulating land use. That's under your jurisdiction, and also, the county has jurisdiction in the unincorporated area, but LAFCO does not. We cannot tell you how to grow your city. So the typical annexation process for a city is really comprised of three steps, three major steps. And it is written a little bit backwards in the law, but, but the first step is for LAFCO to conduct a service review or a special study. And then we use that study, that information, to update your sphere of influence, whether it's amended or to affirm an existing sphere. The sphere of influence for Loomis is determinist with the city boundary, which means it's the same. There, I understand there's been some questions about what is Loomis's sphere. We went through our records at LAFCO, and we found minutes and resolutions, the boundary and the sphere is exactly the same. So during an annexation process, we, as I mentioned, a change of organization is one action. It's just an annexation to a city, for example, or an annexation to a district. That's actually pretty rare for cities. It's mostly a reorganization where we're taking multiple action, where we're annexing to a city and detaching from a sewer district, because now the city will provide sewer. We're detaching from a fire district, because now if the city has a fire department, the fire department will take over those responsibilities. So a reorganization for a city is more common than just a one-action item. If the, if there is no, if we have 100% consent and there's no protest, the commission can waive a protest, but if we have 25% of the registered voters for an inhabited territory, that protest, we do go to an election. And if over 50% submit a protest, then the project is terminated. But, but those are, especially elections, those are rare. And for most city annexations, at least in my experience, more often than not, we do have 100% consent. So the municipal service review, I did provide the government code section for you, but just to, just very quickly, we are mandated by state law to conduct municipal service reviews. And as I mentioned, it's to update spheres, whether we're updating, amending, affirming, if we need to do boundary changes, if we need to provide an extension of service, like the sewer, the water that I mentioned. Also, governance changes, the reorganization that I mentioned with the Meeks Bay and the North Tahoe. Those are, those are instances when we'll need a municipal service review. So in Placer County, we do them by agency. For example, the city of Lincoln, we're currently doing a service review specific to Lincoln because they have an annexation project that they're bringing forward. We do it by service. For example, we have the fire protection, fire agencies municipal service review, which we hope to start in the next few weeks. And then we do region-specific, which is, in our work plan for the next five years, we're dividing the county into subregions. But the purpose of the municipal service review is really to attempt and capture analyzed information about the governance structures, efficiencies of service providers, and identify opportunities for lowering costs or making some improvements to services. I just, these are the determinations that we take a look at. Mostly, it's really, can the city provide the services? Does it have the financial ability? Does it have capacity, you know, sewer capacity, water, is that sufficient? Those are the areas that we look at. And as I mentioned, these are in your handouts, if you want to take a look at the specific code sections. So not as popular recently, but before LAFCO had the charge of conducting municipal service reviews prior to 2000, we had the special studies requirement for, in my prior LAFCO, we did comprehensive annexation plans for cities. And it's still within our, within LAFCO's powers. It's just not used as much anymore because a lot of LAFCOs are. It's just not used as much anymore, because a lot of LAFCOs are going through municipal service reviews. But I'm a huge fan of comprehensive annexation plans for cities. And I brought a sample. So the sphere of influence, which I'll, I'll go over a little bit more than the MSR. Very quickly, it's defined as a plan for the probable physical boundary and service area of a local agency as determined by the commission. It used to be ultimate boundary, and you had many cities that had spheres of influence that were double or triple the size of their existing cities, because they said, well, that's our ultimate boundary. The definition has since changed to probable. And then LAFCO is charged with developing and determining the sphere of each city and special district within the county and enact policies designed to promote the logical and orderly development of areas within that sphere. And LAFCO is charged with conducting these reviews and updates every five years or as necessary. As necessary is usually if there's a huge development that will trigger a need for us to take a look at the sphere of influence again. And then I, the last bullet will lead into my next slide, but every determination by the LAFCO Commission that they make for a change of organization, a reorganization, has to be consistent with a sphere of influence. So we can't do an annexation if it's not in your sphere of influence. So, next slide. So why is a sphere important? Or, so it get, one of the things, or not the only reason, but one of the things that it gives you that's maybe not as, as specific as the others, it's, it gives you an affected agency or affected local agency status. So everyone thinks, well, my city limits, I, you know, I'm an affected agency within the city limits. Yes, very true, but you're also an affected agency in your sphere. So for example, if, you know, a neighboring city wants to annex an area and it's in your sphere, LAFCO gives great weight, that's the law, to an affected agency's resolution asking for whatever considerations that you may, your city may have, because that area is in your sphere. If, so that's one of the things that is very important about a sphere, but maybe is not as, as highlighted as others. And then, you know, as I mentioned, when we're considering annexations or reorganizations, we need to consult the local agencies and receive comments from them, and the commission must consider their comments. So another reason why you would have a sphere for a city that's beyond your existing city limits is a sphere allows you to provide services, such as sewer, such as water, whatever the municipal service may be, to an area that's in your sphere, because you have plans to annex that area, but you may not be ready to annex at this moment. The, if it's not in your sphere, the only way to provide services to that, say, you know, landowner or to that land, is if there's a threat to public, an existing development and there's a threat to public health and safety. So if it was a vacant land that needs sewer services, there's no existing development, there's no existing threat. So you, you can't use that government code. So I wanted to give you an example, not to suggest that the city of Vacaville is anything like, like Loomis, but the reason why I'm, I'm giving this specific example, this is from, it's older, it's from 2015, and it's a project that I work closely with the city on. And it has so many different elements, and it really gives you a big overview of what the city, what a city could include in their sphere. You'll notice just a couple of things. I know it's hard to see, but there's some in the back for the audience and also some in your packet. But the, the city's urban growth boundary that was adopted in their general plan is the red highlight, and you'll notice, or the red dash line, and you notice that within the urban growth boundaries, there's the near term, which is the, the pink areas, and then the long term, which are the, the yellow areas. And what the city decided, why the city decided to do that, is that the areas in, in pink are in the near term, are the areas where they had development agreements and they could show that they had the capacity, they had the ability to provide services. And those other areas, they may not have the capacity or the capability within five years, but they wanted to plan for those services. And then the green areas, just to, I want to show you Area 3, because that area is a, a green belt between the city of Vacaville and, and Dixon. And the reason why that's there is that the city wanted to make sure that it was never developed. Now, they entered into a JPA agreement with the county, with the cities, so that it couldn't be developed, but they wanted to be an affected agency. I did paste, I'm not going to read them, but I did paste some sections of findings and determinations and, and some of the definitions that they used. One of, for example, just really quickly, the blue area, the lock pad in community, it's, I mean, it really fits the definition of an unincorporated community, but they did not want to annex to the city, nor did the city want to provide services, because it's just too expensive and it was cost prohibitive. But they wanted to be an affected agency, so that they would receive notices from the county, from the special districts that provide services in that area when they're extending permits, et cetera. So that's why I put this up here, just so you can see a wide variety of different designations within a city sphere. Okay? And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, and I'm sorry for taking up so much time.
It's fine, it's fine.
If you have any questions.
Yeah, well, did I start that way? Go ahead.
Michelle, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
It's, it's amazing how many phone calls and emails and just conversations that we get, where, you know, somebody lives in Loomis but not within the town of Loomis, and they're like, why can't you just annex us? Why don't you just, and, and the process, I appreciate your presentation, because it really underscores the thoughtfulness of that process and how that works. And so I just wanted to say thank you for your guys' work in that, and it's, it's definitely a long-term conversation, but there's, that's an ongoing conversation around here.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I have a quick question on the, the way the board is put together. So there's two seats for the supervisors, two city council members. How are those city council, how are those towns or cities picked? Is there a rotation?
There is. There's a, a city selection committee, and it's composed or comprised of all the mayors of the towns. And they do meet, I believe it's once a year, although this year, I think we've had three meetings. And they do, there's a schedule and a rotation. And they do try, at least in my experience, the mayor is usually the person seated on LAFCO, but council members are also eligible.
Yeah, so I think it's, it might be a little bit of a challenge for us, because we have only one-year mayors on our, on ours. So I kind of feel like we might be, Sean, are we kind of missing that on occasion?
No, Jenny's gone to all of them, or maybe, yeah, all of them, right? This year, yeah.
Cool.
Right.
As an alternate, and then, but, yeah.
Right, and if one of my other city members are not available, or they cannot vote, because, you know, there's, they have an interest in the project for whatever reason, then Mayor Nicely is able to vote.
Okay.
But when you say that the mayors are on the LAFCO, they're on the mayor's selection committee, but they, a council member can be on the LAFCO.
Yes.
So it's, they're two different things.
Yes. So the city selection committee is made up of all the mayors.
Right, that's what, that's what I was talking about, that particular thing.
Oh, I see.
You've done that already?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you meant LAFCO.
So will that change then? Is it a yearly change, or how often is that changed?
I believe they meet in the spring, and, because LAFCO's seat begins on May, and so they, they'll meet in the spring before that.
They were two-year terms, it seemed like.
Yes, they're two-year terms, and, and as I mentioned, you, you can be a mayor or a council member.
Okay, got it.
I know this is probably a strange question, but I noticed on what are some of LAFCO's powers, there's dissolutions and disincorporation. So what type of wielding of power would that be for LAFCO?
So I've, I've only processed two dissolutions, district dissolutions, and both of them were inactive, meaning that they no longer had assets and liabilities, they weren't performing the, their, they weren't exercising their powers any longer as a board, so we dissolved them. City, you know, disincorporation, those are a lot, I mean, extremely rare, but it can happen. So then, you know, the successor agency would just be the county, and then the special districts, if, you know, those need to be distributed, the services. But yes, it can happen.
It's very rare, though.
Oh, yes. I can, like I said, I've been doing this for over 20 years, and I've only done two dissolutions for special districts, and no one's ever talked about a city. We, we did have a bankruptcy in my last LAFCO, but a city bankruptcy.
Southern California?
Uh, no, for Vallejo.
Vallejo, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Danny, do you have anything?
Thank you, good presentation.
What did he say? Oh, okay. So we'll open up to public comment.
I'm sorry.
Jesse Lunsford, 6133, Smokewood Court. Is any part of Loomis currently in any city or county sphere of influence currently? And do we get notified if we become, if, if we become part of our, city becomes someone else's sphere of influence? Because I know we have great concerns in this area about green belts. There's a separation now that the development did not go through up off of Sierra College that gives us a green belt between us and Rockland. We have concerns as far as the green belt between us and the county, which is Granite Bay, and then us and the county between us and Newcastle. Thanks very much.
So, no, the, the city town, or the town limits exist, no other city can annex it. You can't have two cities serving one area, it's, it's impossible. But as far as the annexation of the, the green belts, if that is, if, for example, I don't know, if Auburn, I'm just making it up, if Auburn wants to annex all of your green belt, and it's in their sphere, if you're not an affected agency, we, you know, we do notice, we provide notice, but the part that I mentioned, we are required to give great weight to an affected agency's resolution. So, does that answer your question?
Sort of in a way, I mean.
Sorry.
You say that, that cities can't annex from other cities? Okay, I'm sorry, then I got confused on the Vacaville map. I thought we had some of that issues between Dixon and Vacaville.
No, it was a green belt. They did a JPA agreement, and the agreement was that no one would annex, it would stay a green belt. So they, they formed a JPA, but it's also in Vacaville's sphere of influence, because they wanted the affected agency status.
It's a, it's a formalized green belt, though. It's an MOU planning document that says neither of these cities are going to develop anywhere on this green belt. It's not just vacant property that hasn't been developed yet. It's a different thing. It's a formal green belt that's been established by both communities.
Yes.
But somebody owns that property, whether it's a county.
Right.
Yeah, and privately owned.
And if you think about between, sorry, but if you think about between Vacaville and like Dixon, all the ag land there, so all that ag land is probably like Williamson Act or something, right? So Williamson Act land, you can't develop unless you do a 25-year notice to develop it. We don't have any Williamson Act land in Loomis.
Right, right. Or you pay off the, the fees, and it is quite expensive.
Deuterian 3486 Delmar. I was just wondering if you could comment about the economic impacts of declaring a sphere of influence, especially in our area, because a lot of the area is really, it's like large parcels, and so is it really hurting us to, to declare a sphere of influence? And then also, in regards to the Vacaville property, you mentioned, or the town, the city, you had mentioned that they have that green belt. Do towns generally, are we allowed to? Are we generally, do they declare a sphere of influence with the purpose of never developing or not developing? Because it seems like a lot of towns, you would say, oh, I want this property, and we're going to build a lot of houses there. Well, can we, could we just say, I want this property, but we're going to not build any houses there? I mean, that's, it seems like we should be allowed to do that, but at the same time, is it done often? I don't know. Thank you.
I would say it's not done often, but, you know, as I mentioned, it's in their general plan. You know, they have policies that prevent development, and they have policies that guide development towards, you know, the, like, the near-term annexation areas. And LAFCO recognized those policies within their general plan, and, you know, and we adopted it as part of their, their sphere of influence. So no, I don't see it a lot, maybe in the ag communities, Yolo County, Solano, and Napa, but, but not in maybe like San Mateo or, or areas like that.
The economic impacts?
Oh, the economic impacts. So it's, it really depends on the, the city, you know, if you are wanting to develop those areas. I mentioned the lock pad in community, and it was, you know, it wasn't economically feasible for the city to provide services, and those people didn't want, you know, they have two and a half, five-acre lots, they didn't want to be in the city limits, because they wanted to have livestock and, and different things. So, you know, it's really up to the city, whether or not including some areas is, you know, financially prudent, financially wise, so.
All right, anybody else out here? How about on Zoom?
We have... Sonya, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
You mentioned that LAFCO was mandated by the state of California, but you also said that they're not under the jurisdiction of the county. So I'm just curious of who LAFCO is accountable to and who the LAFCO Commission is accountable
That's a great question. LAFCO is quasi-legislative, and so we are accountable to the voters. We do have a protest provision in our, the code section, so if the residents or the landowners do not want to be annexed to a city, they have a chance to protest. There is an election protest, or election process, if that goes through. There, if anyone does not, you know, I guess if they're not supportive of a LAFCO action, because we're quasi-legislative, you do have to go through the courts. You know, so usually because LAFCO has to, all of our projects are subject to SEQA, so those are some challenges that we see. Not, sometimes there may be challenges for process. Not, sometimes there may be challenges for process if people maybe weren't notified for whatever reason, but that's very rare on the process challenge. It's usually SEQA challenges that we see. But yes, so we are accountable to to the voters and the courts.
Thank you.
Miguel, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I want to clarify something or have a question about when you get a seat. I was an alternate on LAFCO and then I was, then I became a permanent member on the board. And my my understanding is that's still the policy that a member, Loomis will have a seat on the board. I don't know if it's for two or four years, but we will move on to the board. And my second point is, it's always been stated that Loomis's sphere of influence has always been the town limits. But if you look back, if we had had a sphere of influence 20 years ago, when the property across the street from Sierra College was in the county, then that property would have been part of Loomis and the development there would have been dictated or determined by the town of Loomis. I think we really need to look at a sphere of influence on the east side of Loomis. Right now, the property between Horseshoe Bar and King Road is in the county. And down the road, that property is going to be developed. If we have a sphere of influence, we would have a say on how that property is going to be developed. If not, it'll be developed however the county or the developer seems fit. So those are two points. One, we should end up with a seat on the board and two, we should look at having a sphere of influence on the east side of Loomis. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else?
So just to piggyback on Miguel's question, how do we do that or what is the process to consider it? And then also, it is those residents, when we think of Penrin and Newcastle, who often say or asking why that they can't be part of Loomis voting or some of the decision-making. So maybe some guidance on how we could consider that?
It would be a part of your general plan update when you're doing the environmental impact report, you should consider the sphere of influence and the impacts at that time. And then you come to LAFCO, you know, you request your sphere to be greater, whether it's east side, west side, et cetera, than your existing city limits. And then LAFCO conducts the municipal service review. We do have you on our schedule in the next couple of years. And then, you know, the sphere of influence update and then the annexation. So just a really quick comment on the gentleman who commented. There were two sphere updates for the city of Loomis. So the Holland annexation and the Sierra College annexation, I did find records of that when the, you know, the, those were in the sphere and then were annexed and now it's ceterminous, so.
All right, thank you. Is that?
Just to clarify something too, Michelle, this is probably more of a question for you, I think, but. So the sphere isn't looking at just like folks who would want to be able to vote in elections, it's for, it's intended to be for future growth, right?
Yes.
And so if if we were looking at setting a sphere to include parts of Penrin, that would mean that we were looking at potentially growing into Penrin and developing into Penrin, not just because we think Penrin's a nice place to.
Right, and as I mentioned with the the green belt example, there was a, you know, it's in their in their general plan policies, it's, there's a JPA. So there, you know, there was specific language that said, we will not be developing this, but we want to be an affected agency. So yes, mostly it is for growth, it's your probable, you know, growth areas.
And then and then eventually annexations do go through, whatever, there's always a cost related to that because of the new services that the town picks up. But we don't get 100% of the property taxes for the properties being annexed because you negotiate all that with.
The city and the county negotiates, LAFCO is not part of those negotiations. But yes, you do, the AB8, you know, tax sharing agreement takes place.
Right.
And I have a quick question, Michelle, the counties have a sphere of influence as well, correct?
No, the county has the boundary and it's actually in the state law. And LAFCO, like I just mentioned, I had this question a couple of weeks ago, someone wanted to detach from the county of Placer. So no, it's in the state law and they don't have a sphere. That's specific to LAFCO.
One more question.
Oh, sure.
So I think what a lot of people's concern is with Penrin and Newcastle, not necessarily Loomis, but the people who live there, is that they're going to be developed by the county. So when people talk about spheres of influence, I think it's not for growth, to your point, it's for protecting what is already there. And you mentioned the, not the paddock, but the green belt between, is it Fairfield or Dixon?
There's both, but yes, yeah.
So the, that's to protect the agricultural?
Yes.
Part, so is there ways of going about doing that that doesn't require Loomis to, you know, put a sphere of influence on it? I mean, does the county, I know that they've done that in Lincoln, right?
Yes.
They've done green belts that allow farming for, you know, 50 years or 100 years and, you know, so I think that's one of the concerns that some of the people that live, that consider themselves Loomis, east of Loomis, is that they're going to be developed. So that's why they're like, why aren't we part of your town? I'm not sure that that's the only reason that they say that, but.
So you can create a JPA with another city or the county or a city and, you know, and the county, but that's not through LAFCO. That's the, we don't have purview over that, you just do it amongst yourselves, you can, you know, the or an MOU and that could be another alternative. And then you provide LAFCO with a copy. That's the only requirement that we have in the law currently.
Okay, thank you.
And that would have to be the the town that initiates that or would the citizens be able to, whoever owns that property?
You know, I I'm not sure, in Placer County. But usually, my past LAFCO, it was the cities and the county.
Okay. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
Sorry, I saw a hand go up and then go down for Hannah. Hannah, did you have your hand raised?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right. So that's it.
All right, well, I really appreciate you coming. This, we were doing our general plan update and there were several, several questions and so I think this is very, very helpful for us and I appreciate your your time.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Okay, I'll see you tomorrow.
Madam Mayor, can we take a five-minute break?
Yes.
Please.
We're gonna take a five-minute break.
We're going to move on to item number 16, SECOG presentation.
Yes.
I'm going to turn it over to Casey and she'll run through this. I gotta load this thing up for you.
Oh, great. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Hello, Sean. It's good to see you in person. Thank you so much for allowing the time for me to be here. I'm Casey Lazon. I'm with Sacramento Area Council of Governments, your staff at SECOG. We are going to get onto the slides, so I'm just going to go into them. So SECOG is the Council of Governments for the six county Sacramento region. Uniquely as a government agency, it's where every single local government in the region has a seat at a regional table twice a month to discuss, to plan, to invest in the future of the region. And you are represented, the town of Lumis, by council member Clark Creutz, both on the board as well as on the Land Use and Natural Resources Committee and on our Race Equity Inclusion Working Group. And so, thank you so much, Director Clark Creutz, for that. I'm here to, if you want to move forward past this and the map, which just signifies our region. I'm here to talk to you about one of the projects that SECOG undertakes. Every four years, we are required to do that in state and federal law. It is, we're calling it the Blueprint. It's our long-range transportation and land use plan. We are calling it the Blueprint in recognition of the blueprint vision and process that the region undertook nearly 20 years ago, a total of voluntary effort to say, hey, as a region, we're fast-growing. What is the best way for us to grow sustainably so that we and our children and our children's children can be here and thrive? And so, in honor of that, we are naming this plan after the blueprint. And so, if we go to the next slide, please. Why we do this blueprint plan, it's, well, one, we're required to do it, but two, it's the right thing to do. If we are a dynamic and growing region, every single community is growing very differently, of course. But in total, the region is growing. That is something that we would want to be versus a dying region. And so, the things that we have to do to think about what that means is every local government has your general plans, your vision of how you want to be in the future. And all of those things, all of those different visions, at some point, they interact. And they interact in this regional plan. And so, what we do with the plan is we start out by looking at how much is the region likely to grow over time? We're looking to the year 2050. The slide here is really simply just showing, illustrating that we are still a growing region. We are growing more slowly. The pink bar is just saying, look, we were growing about this much. You know, when we last updated this plan, our growth rate is going to be slowing down. That's actually on trend with the rest of the state and the country. But the Sacramento region is actually still growing more quickly than the state of California. So, just some context for us. And so, if we are going to be growing quickly, next slide, please. One of the things that we have to think about is in our transportation plan, in this blueprint, where we have to include all transportation investments that are, you know, that are planned for the future, right? Roads, highways, transit, sidewalks, bikeways, like everything that's going to run on the ground. But there's a limited fund. Unlike a general plan, which says, this is what we envision becoming, we have to do some constraints on the blueprint. We have to project what funding is likely to be available over time. It has to allow the region to meet air quality standards. It has to let the region read greenhouse gas reductions targets, a host of other transportation performance measures. So, all of these different things get considered in the development of the plan. What the SECOG board decided to do with this blueprint is to adopt a triple bottom line policy for it, which says, we want to design this blueprint plan that is going to give us an investment for transportation and land use policies and housing policies for the future with the goal of achieving an equitable, prosperous, and environmentally sustainable region. It's a very big lofty goal, and we're saying those are all equal goals. So, the question becomes, how do we develop a plan for infrastructure that has housing policy, that has economic development in it, that helps, that achieves equity, economy, and environment goals? If we go to the next slide, please. And specifically thinking about, like, what does the triple bottom line mean for transportation? Maybe it means that we are investing in the repair and the maintenance of our existing infrastructure because that is woefully behind. Maybe it is identifying those places that are unsafe on our transportation system and trying to focus, you know, some investment there to make them safer. Ultimately, we do need, we want to bring that question and that conversation to all the communities of the region so that your communities can, you can inform us on how we should design that into policies and ultimately, funding priorities in that long-range plan. Next slide, please. So, to kick that off, what we are going to start with is developing some pathways, is what we're calling them. These are three different what-if futures. We're looking at how much growth is coming into the region, and we are trying to say, if the region grows in three very different ways, what are the likely implications for a number of things that matter to people? For mobility, like how long it takes you to get places and your ability to take different modes to get there. For public health, for air quality, for agriculture, for housing and the types of housing people have available to them. So, we want to create all of those different pathways. And if you go to the next slide, the underpinning of that is different assumptions about where growth is likely to occur in the region. Now, the town of Lumis just had a conversation about, you know, your boundaries and whether, you know, how you're going to grow, and you have very specific policies. And so, in this case, Lumis may not see a lot of divergence in the pathways, but the region will, and that's going to affect Lumis, right? And so, I want to make sure that even though, I want to acknowledge that these pathways may not look very different for the town of Lumis, but for the whole region, they will, and they'll affect everyone. And so, the first pathway is looking at 40% of future growth occurring within existing communities. So, that's within existing city limits, but also just in neighborhoods and business areas that already exist. And then, the other, the other 60% is in expansion or new growth areas. In the second pathway, we're saying, 2/3 of growth is going to happen within existing communities, and then the balance of it is going to happen through expansion. And then, in the third pathway, we're saying 90%. What happens if 90% of the growth happens within existing communities? And then, the balance of it happens through new growth. And again, that fluctuation is going to be all over the place in the region. In some communities, maybe not so much, and in some communities, probably very different because they may have very big growth aspirations. And so, we're looking at, what are the different ways that happens? Next slide, please. And so, we will take those pathways and all of the, we're going to measure all of the different impacts of those futures, you know, to, again, understand what is the implication for all of these different factors, you know, economic, mobility, public health, air quality, agriculture, et cetera. And we're going to try to translate those into information that we can then take out for community engagement, for public workshops. We're going to try to use lots of different tactics, again, thinking back to when SECOG and the whole region did the blueprint 20 years ago. It'll be a little different this time because we have so many different kinds of technologies available to us. But we will be doing pop-up workshops, so we are going to be asking for your input on where are community events that are already happening, that we might be able to go to, to be able to just meet people where they're at and have conversations with them about these issues. We are also looking to you for any community-based organizations that operate within or around your community, any community leaders, so that we can get the word out to them and maybe even be able to partner with community-based organizations to share information that might be important to their clients or constituencies. So, we're really trying to tailor the way we do the engagement, knowing that people have very full, busy lives that are very important and that long-range planning on its face isn't necessarily something that a lot of people think about or want to on a day-to-day basis. We totally understand that. Next slide, please. The timeline, the overall timeline for this, right now, we are visiting every council and board in the region because we want to make sure that you're aware of this. Again, invite any engagement that you want to be able to have in this. We will be doing most of our public, the vast majority of our public engagement and outreach in 2023. And then, in 2024, we're targeting the adoption of the plan. What does adoption look like, or what happens after the plan gets adopted? We go into implementation. Implementation happens in two ways. One, locally, you implement your local policies and plans, and you also implement them at the regional level through SECOG. So, the vast majority of the programs and projects that SECOG runs on a normal basis come out of the long-range plan. And so, I want to give you a few examples of those. Next slide, please. So, one of the, one of the programs is coming, well, one, our board set up the Race Equity Inclusion Working Group a couple of years ago, and we are now in the process of developing a racial equity action plan that is going to be driving how SECOG engages with communities to try to really, everything that I said about what we're trying to do with engagement is really so much driven by the intentions in that racial equity action plan. The second, the EE, and there's an I behind the, whoa, thanks. I appreciate that. I never know how the sound is, you know, going to play. Oh, this could have been a while. Okay. That's good to know. Thank you. So, there's an E, that's an EE, and then there's an I right behind the Zoom boxes on the screen there. Should I stop? It sounds like it's almost gone. Okay. Yeah. Oh, is that like the, the other engine? Sometimes it's like the other engine? Yeah, okay. I know. Right? Absolutely. And some of the most interesting places to visit are the ones that are right next to a train station. I mean, yeah. You want me to try? That's it. Or not? Yes. You want me to go? Okay, I'll go. But tell, let me know if I need to stop again. Happy to. Okay. Engage and Power Implement is a funding program that the SECOG board established in our last funding round. So, the regional funding program, it's typically for county. Here in Placer County, you have PCTPA that does funding. But this EEI program, we are hoping to make it six-county eligible, which the program is to fund planning that's co-created between local government and community so that we can create a pipeline of transportation projects that are driven from the community. We think this is very timely, given that there's a lot of bigger pots of transportation funding at the state and federal levels that are really looking for community-co-created projects. Next slide, please. Another program that has, that came out of our last long-range plan is Green Means Go. This truly was the local governments of the Sacramento region coming together, saying, yep, we want to do this. This is going to solve a really important problem for infill housing development in our communities. And we are so pleased that after three years of working really hard and advocating for this, that we have a funding program that we are excited is underway right now. Next slide, please. Another implementing activity of our long-range plan is the Mega-Region Working Group. This is a working group of board appointees from SECOG, the Metropolitan Transportation Council, which is the Bay Area equivalent, and the San Joaquin Council of Government, which is our other sister agency that's at the tip of the San Joaquin Valley. And they, they work together because our regions are so much more connected to really see what is it that we can do to strengthen our economies and ensure that the goods and commerce and people that have to flow within, between, can do so efficiently. And so, one of the things that happened in the last year and a half with the Mega-Region Working Group is the identification of the Mega-Region Dozen. These are projects from each of the three regions that were identified as significant for the mega-region so we could do joint advocacy on these projects. The ones from the Sacramento region are the Yolo I-80 Managed Lanes Project, the I-5 Managed Lanes Project, the Sacramento-Roseville Third Track Project, and then a Valley Rail and ACE San Joaquin Train Extension. That's the, like, the orange and green that you see right there. Next slide, please. Another implementing program out of our long-range plan is the Regional Trails, Regional Trails Network. We are so excited about that. I think everybody's really excited about that, and we are at the point now, it's been adopted, and now we are looking for, to really implement it. Next slide, please. Our path forward is the prosperity strategy that SECOG developed in partnership with Valley Vision, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, the Metro Chamber of Commerce, and the Asian Chamber for Inclusive Economic Development. It came, again, it was born out of our last long-range plan. SECOG's role in this economic development strategy is the infrastructure part of it, naturally, the transportation infrastructure part of it. And then, next slide, please. When we talk about the future, we are not necessarily talking about your future or my future because we may not be here. Our Youth Leadership Academy is going strong a few years now. This is where we take high school students and we teach them about local government and regional government to try to inspire them and, you know, help them figure out how they can be civically engaged so that perhaps one day, they're sitting in your seats. And so, that is one of the, one of our favorite programs that we run as well at SECOG. And so, with that, that was just a smattering of some of the programs that come out of the long-range plan. So, to try to help make it real, because it does get implemented on a day-to-day basis, we really hope that you will want to engage with us in this and that your community members will want to. And I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
I appreciate your presentation. It was very informative, and I thank you. I have no questions.
Thank you.
SECOG has always been an interesting organization to me. And, you know, in a lot of ways, I look at the hard work that they do and I applaud it. And in some ways, obviously, I struggle with it. And transportation is probably one that rings the most for me because I think out of everybody travels the most in the room. And so, getting to and from is an important thing. And I've recently tried going down the electric vehicle rabbit hole. And so, I've done a lot of different things, and I look at transportation a little bit differently than most. And I see some efficiencies and inefficiencies within the system. But, you know, part of what, when I look at transportation, you look at communities, and then you look at how the communities function, and I think sometimes that gets lost in the weeds a little bit. And I look at things like the RENA numbers that come down. And basically, that pushes greater urban sprawl within a community that doesn't look to grow and isn't a job center. And so, now, what do we do? We increase VMT, and we increase greenhouse gases, and we increase all of these things in the idea that we'll just move more housing out. And so, I would like to see greater consideration. I was actually back east, and there was a community back there, and they worked with local major manufacturing facilities, higher education and things like that. And they actually created a job center and built that housing around that. So, like, we actually take somebody, move them, and actually put them in something where they can move up. And I don't think that that's being looked at on, at, in this state. And so, I just, I question a lot of the, especially on the housing side of it. And it's pushing higher densities further out, further away from job centers, and I struggle with that. And when we're talking about transportation and how we fund transportation, how transportation works, we're not making the problem better, and none of the solutions that we have will make those better. I serve on PCTPA, and, you know, I look at this, where I-8065, the Third Track, I think is great, especially with the long term of that, that eventually, that that could reach all the way up to Reno.
Yeah.
You know, so, I mean, there's really some great things that can happen. I think we need to take better emphasis, number one, on the people and the individual and communities. And right now, that is not being looked at. It's just, hey, here's your number and deal with it. And so, I will say that in a lot of ways, I do struggle with SECOG, but I appreciate some of that work that's done, so thank you.
Thank you. I very much appreciate that we need to think about people because I think that is, that is the reorientation that I think we will be taking on with the Racial Equity Action Plan. It is leading with racial equity, but ultimately, leading with racial equity means that the goal is to really engage and understand and see all members of our community. So, I say, I think, I hope, because the board, our board is to take action on it in October, so it's not yet an official thing.
But it is, it is the person. It is the individual and the person that, you know, what a great opportunity it is. But if we move them so far away from their job, how much did we increase their opportunity? And so, I think just, there's so much innovation in this area. There's so much that can be done. And so many companies that would, I mean, great-paying companies that would do anything to be able to train people to move up in their organization. And I just think that there could be so much more engagement outside of just government to government that really takes the person into account and how we can actually help them move up. And so, I think that that's a greater emphasis that needs to be looked at.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey. It's always nice to see you and excellent presentation. I always look forward to hearing what you have to say. And you explain things really well because SECOG's a very complicated agency. And I know we get a lot of questions on, you know, what exactly do they do? And I really think that the public engagement that you're talking about, that you're going to be doing over the next year, is hopefully going to get information like Councilmember Baker was talking about as well. Because, you know, you're dealing with all kinds of cities, and our town does not want to grow, and we don't like the RENA numbers, you know, we want to be able to have that local control. So, it's an important piece of information that I know you've heard before, but as you're gathering all this information, I know that you will be passing that on to the board. And I appreciate that, and I think that's why you're here tonight. And so, thank you for coming down and visiting our beautiful town and talking to us about this. Thank you.
I want to thank you too for the presentation. And I had the opportunity to be a part of Civic Lab, so that was a very rewarding experience. And I think that I look forward to participating in some of these activities that you have coming for us, for our community. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comment.
Yes.
Oh, Danny. Danny, sorry. I try, that's the first time I-
At this moment, my internet is working, so you caught me at a good time. But I don't have a comment other than, thank you for the presentation.
All right, thanks. All right, I'm going to open it up to public comment.
Jesse Lunsford, 6133 Smokewood Court. Councilmember Baker, thank you for the words, "They forget the individual," and that's the problem. My question is, PCTA, for the last decade, has been pushing, we need sales tax for matching funds in order to get our roadways in. How is SECOG funding their transportation needs?
SECOG's or PCTA's?
PCTA is pushing the sales tax so we can do matching funds. With SECOG as a regional, how are you funded for transportation needs?
Yes. That's a great question. So, the funding that SECOG awards for transportation comes to us from the federal government. So, federal highways and Federal Transit Administration through the California Department of Transportation. That is how every metropolitan planning organization, that's what SECOG is, that's how every one of them receives their funding. We also have an arrangement with PCTPA and El Dorado Transportation Commission for a certain amount of that funding to go to those agencies because they are state, regional transportation planning agencies. SECOG's funding, though, in the context of all of the transportation needs and all of the transportation funding that's out there is actually a very small proportion of it. Most transportation funding is locally derived, sales taxes, developer fees. That's where you see the majority of it coming. And so, when Placer County Transportation Agency talks about a sales tax that is to up the local source of funding, what then happens is there are grant programs, I had mentioned before, at the state level and at the federal level, where the more local match that you have, the more competitive you will be in that grant program. Does that answer? Okay.
All right, anybody else out there? How about on Zoom?
Yep.
Tim Ondurco, go ahead.
Hi there. Thank you for hearing me. Tim Ondurco, 3145 Orchard Park Court. Hi, Casey. I have a question, but let me get to my question before I ask the question. So, when I was on SECOG nearing my end of tenure in 2020, the board adopted the program, the EEI program. the, the program, the EEI program and response, and a knee jerk response, I thought, to some of the things that were happening nationally. And at the time, I had asked about what some of the definitions the, the consultant at the time that was promoting the EEI program had and how CACOG board members were defining equity. And nobody really wanted to talk about that at the moment. But, you know, since then, I've given it a lot of thought. And what I come out with, with racial equity is, is that it's basically, it takes into account systemic inequalities that exist. And at the time, I asked the executive director of CACOG if he knew of any racial inequalities that existed at CACOG. Nobody could identify any of those. I would ask the town of Loomis if there are any racial inequalities at Town Hall. The four years I was there, I was unaware of any racial inequalities in policy or in practice. And so I guess my question is, why would we need something that is applied to something that isn't obviously there? I guess I'd also like to ask, Casey, would you be able to define what racial inequality is? Because this was all over your slideshow. What is racial equity? And it's important to understand that that's different than equality. Equality being defined as something that's applied under the rule of law to everybody the same, but equity and equality are very different things. So I would urge the town council and anybody in a position at Placer County to, to push back on this EEI stuff that is being promoted. There's no evidence whatsoever that any of these programs exist. And if I'm wrong, I'd like someone to bring forward an example of what these, these equality programs, where they have succeeded. Because so far, all I can see is that those programs really divide communities. And so I'm open to hearing more about these, these type of programs. But right now, I'm not convinced that this would help Placer County. And if this is such a, again, if this is such a, an important thing for Placer County to consider, please, again, define what racial equity is. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. It is good to see you, to see you as well. So racial equity is the state where race can no longer be a predictor of life outcomes. Because at this present time, and we do have data on the Sacramento region to show that if you take various demographic socioeconomic indicators such as life expectancy, if you take income, housing cost burden, if you disaggregate that by race, it shows that by race, people of color and specifically it's very, it's almost, you know, predictable. Black, indigenous, Latino Hispanic overwhelmingly, and in some cases, some Asian populations will be much poorer on those scales than the white population or just the population as a whole. And this is not just in our region. It is in the entire country. That's what, that, those are the effects of, I think you had said systemic racism. What systemic racism adds up to in our region, and it's a very, it's a, it's a very, it's a story everywhere. So it's not unique to Sacramento. But you can see the evidence of this in the practice of redlining, which was from the early 20th century, when we had communities where lenders literally drew a line around certain areas and said, in these areas, we will not lend because they are communities that have a high amount of various people of color. And we will only lend in these communities, which do not have those populations of color there. And over time, what happened was if you couldn't borrow money to improve your house or you couldn't get a loan to purchase a house, you were in a lower state of financial security and even the ability to build up the wealth at somebody who could secure a loan to either buy their house or make a home improvement. And so where property values would rise, you had rising wealth, you had the ability to send your kids to college, do a lot of things that afforded your, your family over generations to be able to better themselves, which is what every family wants to do. And in those communities where you struggled to be able to access the same kinds of loans or the same kinds of, you know, financial instruments, that was a much more of a struggle. And so that's part of what you see play out. Then, when the interstate highway system began to be built, those communities that were effectively disinvested because you couldn't put the same amount of funding into properties there, they were devalued because they weren't invested in. And then they were, for the creation of those interstate highways, often identified as blighted areas. So if they were blighted areas, that meant that, well, then we can take those, we can claim them with eminent domain, build our highways there and, and, you know, uproot the people that live there. They had to move to other places. The legacy of that is that those who still live by those highways suffer from the physical effects of being next to constant pollution. So you see higher asthma rates there. You see, you know, just generally hi- higher rates of cardiovascular illness there. And that is something that we are finally recognizing. Now, I wasn't alive when a lot of this stuff happened. CACOG as a government agency really wasn't around, I mean, there was an iteration of us that was there, but not there probably during a lot of when this damage happened. What we are trying to acknowledge though, is that we are a government agency that invests money, right? That makes policy like all government agencies do. And we have to acknowledge that there are still, to, to the point of individuals, people who suffer from that impact still today. And I think I would layer on top of that, the genesis of the Engage and Power Implement Program is to say, look, at the same time that we may have been moving out of condemning neighborhoods and building highways, we did get into this place of government knows best and we're going to build our roadways and we're going to build highways and we're going to do some community outreach. We're going to like hold an open house and check the box. And I would not suggest, I, I'm not saying that the town of Loomis has done this, right? But it is definitely a common practice in most government agencies where community members didn't feel heard. And so what we are trying to do with this program, and it's our very first time doing the program, so admittedly, we could very well mess up. We hope to learn from that. We want to do it transparently so that everyone can learn from it and see like, okay, we saw what CACOG did, like, we're not going to do that or we're going to do something different. But to try to say, look, we want to go out to communities, we want to let local governments have this funding to be able to co-create with them, to do it in a completely different way than they have done in the past, in the hopes that we can start to build a pipeline of projects that are truly lifted up by the residents of that community. So long, long-winded answer, but it was a very, very good question. I appreciate it and I'm open to further discussion on it.
Excuse me, next one is Sonia Coupler. Sonia, go ahead.
Can you hear me? My question is, who is SACCOG, the organization itself, accountable to? And who is the SACCOG board accountable to?
Excellent question. So CACOG is, as a metropolitan planning organization, we, we have, we have two roles. We're a metropolitan planning organization, that's a federal designation, and we're also a council of governments. So we are beholden to the Federal Highway Administration and, and the Federal Transportation Authority for all of the transportation planning and funding that we do. We also have responsibilities under state law, such as Councilmember Baker, you'd mentioned RENA, so the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. That is a, an activity that CACOG is required to perform under state law. And so the Housing and Community Development Department oversees us for that. Any of the funding that we receive, including Green Means Go funding, we're receiving from the state, there is always an agency that we are accountable to for that. As well as Environmental Protection Agency and the California Air Resources Board for our environmental air quality and greenhouse gas requirements.
Miguel, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. The arena numbers that CACOG provides is, is always stated, and it's an important thing for the town of Loomis. Several years ago, they did an arena number for Loomis and they used the ZIP code 95650. And that went all the way out to Folsom Lake. So our, we had a projected population increase of like 18,000 in Loomis. I'm wondering now, how does CACOG determine the arena numbers for Loomis?
I can speak a little bit to that. And then Miguel, if you want, I can have our housing experts follow up with you on that. The, there is a regional number that we receive from the Housing and Community Development Department. So it's an eight-year projection. CACOG is then required to allocate that across all of the local governments in the region. We use the growth, and, and that is something that, by the way, we do every eight years. So when we do this blueprint, we will not be doing RENA. But we did do it for the last one. So we use the growth projections or the growth forecast of the long range plan as the baseline for how we are distributing those units. So if a community is going to be 30% of the region's growth, then we will start with, they're going to be getting 30% of the regional housing needs allocation, right? That's how it goes across the board. And then there's also an income distribution within that. So we have to look, we have to assign units based on a median family income. That's, so we look at those households that are low income, very low income, moderate and above moderate income. So every community gets that. That is, what the mix of that is for a community is based on what the current income distribution is. And what we are trying to do, this is also a requirement under state law, is move that community towards regional parity. So if you have a lot of high income households today, whatever your number is, even if it's 100,000 units or if it's 100 units, your, your mix is going to have more low income units likely and fewer high income units. There are also other, a number of other factors that we apply to adjust the units between communities, like proximity to transit, actually job centers, proximity to job centers, whether it's a community of high opportunity or not. And so in the case of Loomis, it probably doesn't move the numbers very much because generally, Loomis isn't- Is that why you were smirking?
Yeah, I was like, wow.
I didn't notice it until it, it rang. Okay. Because it's a lot for Loomis in the region. It's a fairly small amount that it's moving. But I recognize that it's a lot because you're a small town and you're not interested in growing very much. So there is, there's probably another layer in there that I could be getting to, Miguel, but I, I need to get a, the RENA expert to, to share that with you.
All right. Great. That it? Oh, David? Okay.
David, ring 3486, no more. So we just had a conversation about the sphere of influence and I was wondering if our sphere of influence increases, is that going to increase our RENA numbers? Is that based on the size of like acreage or is it just based on first, like property?
No, it's a great, it's a great question. Actually, I was really, I was really happy to go after LAFCO because LAFCO is one of the agencies we work with when we're doing, when we're doing the long range plan. And the answer is, it really depends. If a community is not planning to annex and develop that area, then it doesn't have an effect. Because what, because what RENA looks at is, it's based on how much you're projected to grow. And then it's adjusted based on that. So if you're annexing, like, we have, there's many communities in the region that have a sphere of influence and they don't have growth plans for it. So the sphere doesn't really count.
Okay. We don't have any other questions?
Everybody else on Zoom?
We really appreciate you coming in.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. We are moving on to the item 17, Loomis Library and Community Center Annual Report. Hi, Sarah.
All right. So thank you, everybody. This is my annual report that just is updating you on what the library did over the past fiscal year. So everything in this report reflects the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. Next slide. So I just wanted to start by recognizing my staff. They are really the people who make it happen. As you can see up here, there's me. And then below me, I have Chris, who is a library assistant, Deborah, librarian, and Kristen, also a library assistant. She, Kristen is the only one who is currently part-time. And she, we are very happy to be welcoming her back. She's been on maternity leave since March and we are happy that she is coming back next week. Very excited.
Sean, can you move the Zoom board so we can see their faces just for a second? There they are. Thank you.
So like I said, we have three full-time staff and one part-time staff at the library, including myself. And then we had over 800 volunteer hours this past year. So those volunteers are also very important to us. We have a, a core group of about five that come in regularly, but then throughout the year, we'll have students volunteer for certain periods of time and, you know, others volunteer as well. So, yeah, next slide. A little bit about our collection. We have 13,767 items in our collection. That includes books, movies, audiobooks, anything that you can check out, games, puzzles. And we added 2,696 items to our collection last fiscal year, which is, you know, so we're constantly refreshing the, the items that are in the collection. And then we circulated 36,484 items, which is a huge amount. In, when I'm done with this slide, you'll see a slide that shows the past years. And this year blew it out of the water. So we don't just circulate books though. People think libraries, they think books. But we also have Chromebooks, we have hotspots, we have park passes, we have games and puzzles, we have seeds, we have DVDs. And then we have our digital library as well, which is a 24/7 accessible library full of eBooks, e-audiobooks, TV, movies and music. And then in the pictures here, you'll see, these are their top items from last year. So we've got Lori, Leanne Moriarty's Apples Never Fall, that was the most popular adult fiction book in the library. And then Dogman, of course, and the latest Diary of a Wimpy Kid and Nerdy Corn. Nerdy Corn was number one. So, yeah. Next slide. So here you can see, this is our past information about circulation, just items that were checked out from the library. And we had that little bit of the dip in the 2020, 2021 fiscal year due to COVID. And I was not sure what to expect when I was putting this together. I figured we had recovered. I wasn't sure how much we had recovered. And I was really blown away that we had such a dramatic increase in circulation compared to past years. So we've been busy. Next slide.
Can I just point out that even though we were in the middle of the pandemic with 2020 and 2021- 2020 and 2021, it didn't take all that much of a dip?
Yeah, it really didn't. It was a minor dip, which is...
You guys were basically doing it on call and, yeah, so thank you for doing that. I appreciate it.
So membership, this is the number of people who have library cards. This was another one that I wasn't quite sure what to expect when I was putting this together because, you know, as people, as we add new members, some accounts expire after three years. And so if people aren't using their library cards, they aren't renewing their library cards, those memberships might dip off. We have 1,885 members as of June 30th, and we added 660 members this past year. And I have to say, the picture, that was from Eggplant Festival, I believe, a couple of years ago. We, in the past, did a lot of these community events where we would do basically membership drives. We would encourage people to get cards, we would be out in the community. And with the pandemic, we didn't get to do that as often. But we still were able to add quite a few people. We have a lot more people, I've noticed, coming to us, which is a great thing. Next slide. So here, you can see, we had that dramatic dip, really dramatic in this one, of people getting library cards in 2020, 2021. But then it's right back up, almost to where we were in 2018, 2019, which we did a huge push that year to get new people signed up for library cards. So I was very pleased with these numbers as well. Partnerships, most of our, a large part of our programs that we do come from these partnerships with the community. We really believe that they're the most important part of what we do, is engaging our community and making sure that it's not just us doing everything, it is local businesses. So we have partnerships that we did this year. We partnered, of course, with our Friends of the Library, which we do regularly. We work very closely with them, and they provide us a lot of support throughout the year. The Historical Society, I'm sure some of you have seen our Throwback Thursday posts on Facebook that are very popular, that is, with the Historical Society. The Quilters Guild, up in the upper right-hand corner, you can see the beautiful quilts that they donate to be displayed throughout the year at the library and just help bring some color into the building. The UC Master Gardeners, as I mentioned previously, we have workshops with them. And then, of course, the gardens, the Inspiration Gardens, that will be coming shortly. The Senior Life Center, once a month, I visit there and bring the library to the seniors there so that they don't have to travel to the library. The library comes to them. McGoughlin Studios, they provided support, including sound support at our Month of Remembrance Panel. The South Placer Fire District, they've come, they came recently and did a demonstration of the fire trucks for the kids, which was fun. Lend a Heart, Lend a Hand, they're the group that comes once a month to do our Read to a Dog program. And the Placer County Genealogical Society, who also does programs out of the library for free. Next slide. All right, so some statistics about programs. So we had 2,641 people attend 118 programs last year. That was, the number of people was incredible, and the number of programs was really, I think that was our highest number of programs that we've ever done. We did over 1,700 Take and Make Craft Kits. So those are craft kits that are available every Friday for free, that people can grab and take home. We started doing that during the pandemic, and it's been so popular that we decided that was something that was going to have to continue. And then other passive programs. So a passive program is something that nobody's really in charge of, it's not happening at a set time, but it's something that you can do anytime you come into the library or, you know, just self-directed. So we've had scavenger hunts throughout the library using QR codes, which is fun. We have a cabinet that we do an iSpy in the library, so we change that out monthly, and it's just full of objects that kids can come and try and find. We have our maker space where kids can do crafts, and then, of course, our puzzle table, our Lego table, and our train table, which are available constantly, that are very popular. Next slide, please. This year, we did our Month of Remembrance. This was something that I am incredibly proud of. It was a lot of work, and it was so worth it. We had five events. We had a lecture about the Japan towns of Placer County. We had a pop-up museum. We had a teen book club. We had an adult book club. And then we had our oral history panel. And for anybody who missed the first event or the last event, those are both on YouTube, on our YouTube channel. You can search Loomis Library, and those will pop up. And then we also added a special collection in our library of books that are focused on Japanese-American history. And we, our Throwback Thursdays throughout the month of both February, when it was originally scheduled for, and then we had to push it because of COVID to May. So both February and May, our Throwback Thursdays for those months were focused on the Japanese-American history of the area. Our summer read, our summer reading program this year, the theme was Read Beyond the Beaten Path. We had 270 total participants. Those are people logging their reading. That's what we mean by total participants. But as you can see, we had 470 people attend events. We did 20 events over five weeks. So that was a lot of work. And then we had 108,000 minutes logged of reading. So that was a really great total to see. And at the top, you can see Ms. Heidi over there, she's holding a robot that she made. And that was one of our crafts. We did crafts once a week. And then we have the pinwheels as well, that were also part of our crafts, our weekly crafts. Slide. And then finally, I just wanted to leave you with this. This is a cartoon that I regularly am sent, and it's one of my favorites. So you can see, there's a person standing outside of the library, and he says, why do we even need libraries anymore? And then it says inside, there's an unemployed man using the internet connection to apply for jobs, there's a reference librarian helping senior citizen with genealogy research, his family saving money by borrowing books and DVDs instead of buying them, teens at an after-school program and not getting into trouble, and kids signing up for the summer reading program. And I am very proud to say that those are all things that we see on a regular basis within our library. When I first saw this, I went, oh, that's so great, but that probably is more of a big library thing. And it is not anymore. It is our library. So what's next? We have the Inspiration Gardens, as you know, with the UC Master Gardeners, that we're very much looking forward to, gardens outside of our library that will be open to the public. We want to continue with our partnerships, as I mentioned before, that is an integral part of what we do. And then we are proud to have introduced Libby to the library. This is very recent. Libby is an eBook service that is very user-friendly, and we were not able to offer it previously, and now we are able to. So we're very excited about that. And it, the other thing about Libby is that all of the other libraries in the area have one catalog, and we actually have a different catalog of books than, say, the Placer County Library System, Roseville Library System, and the Lincoln Library System. So we're able to offer something different, which we're excited about. And then we just want to stay innovative, you know? We've been really successful with some of our innovative programs, like Spice Club, and we just want to continue to push that edge. Welcome any questions.
I'll just applaud you guys. Just like your comic says, people think that libraries are just books on the shelf, and you guys put on program after program with a great deal of success, and it does nothing but bring people in and strengthen communities, educate people, and help people to be better. So I appreciate all of your efforts and all that goes forward with the volunteers and everything. So thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Brian. It's great news that the membership has grown, and it's a testament to you and your staff. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for a wonderful presentation, and just so incredibly proud of the work that you do and all the people that have volunteered, and, you know, all the incredible opportunities for our community to use the library and the many different ways that it really makes our community stronger and better, like Brian said. But again, what I think is really wonderful, too, is that, you know, you've gone back in history and shown, you know, what our history has been, and that's such an important component of what we are. And I appreciate all that work that you did, and it was a phenomenal job. And that is your capstone, I think, for the year, and I think is a wonderful job. Way to go.
Well, I think you know how proud I am, and I think you guys are doing an amazing job for our community. And I just thank all of you at the library for all you're doing. So, thanks.
Jenny? One more thing.
One more thing.
And once again, proving the county was wrong. Thank you.
Yes. Danny? Danny? He's frozen, I think. All right. Thank you, Sarah. Go ahead, Danny. I know he's saying you did a really good job. All right. Well, thank you, Sarah. We really appreciate that.
Open it up for public comment.
Yeah. We'll open it up for public comment. Anybody on Zoom?
We do have one person on Zoom. Sonia, go ahead.
Hi, I have a question. I'm wondering if the library is going to be bringing back the NASA guys to talk about the planets and stuff?
So unfortunately, that program was not well-attended, and they have told us that they are not interested in doing it anymore, which is unfortunate because it was really, you know, it was a great program, but we got, I think, at most five people attending. And, yeah, he decided he just didn't, he wasn't interested. So, sorry.
Is that it? Yeah. Okay. So now... Oh?
Did he raise his hand? Uh, he did. Not Jean, hang on. Hang on, I gotta... All right, Miguel, go ahead.
Hey, thanks. First, I want to compliment the library staff and the librarian on making our library really a multi-use community activity. And then the other question I have, probably to Sean, when the town of Loomis got out of the county library system, the county charges a tax to support the libraries. My understanding was that the town of Loomis was supposed to get that money, so I wondered what happened to that.
Yeah, so when we moved forward with purchasing the building from the county for a dollar, that included that tax issue being, we parted ways on that, basically. So it was part of the agreement to purchase the building.
All right. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to council committee reports. Danny?
I'm back again. Zoom is not being my friend tonight. I don't have any report to give.
All right.
I have nothing.
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. And I have nothing tonight, so... I froze him.